Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.
Yep, we got enough.
Air if you open the power with us, please.
Sure. Let's pray. Dear heaven and father, we thank you, we love you, we praise you for all that you stand for and what you do for us. Lord, I just want to say thank you with many blessings on me and my family. Lord, we ask you that you be with us during this meeting, that we conduct our business, the county business, to the best of your, our ability. We look to you for your, for your guidance and your wisdom in all that we do. That we all may be as bright shining light within our communities, within our county here, Lord. Lord, I ask all these things in your name, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pray to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Called me the order. The air motion we claim was approved, the minutes was read.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, very say I. Now, motion approved, thank you.
I'll make the motion. That's sick.
All very say I. Both likewise. I see you gentlemen here with South Bill, I gather, by the logo on your shirts there. Yeah, that term, uh, promoter for whatever you'd like to say or do.
We've got a top on in here. No, hey, come in.
Okay, let's, let's give a little bit of the order.
I'll work, give them any, any.
My doctor's already got shot. Anyway, we're here.
Okay. Uh, my name's Andy Wegg. This is Jim Lightfoot. Together, we're, uh, represent a company called South Bill. South Bill does one thing, we build county jails. Uh, we do nothing else but county jails. We've done this for twenty-one years. We've done about fifteen thousand beds in five southern states, about a million square feet. Uh, we don't do state penitentiaries, we don't do federal penitentiaries, apartment complexes, office buildings. For twenty-one years, we build county jails. Again, this is all we do. We're comprised of an architectural team member and a construction management team member. We're a team, uh, that has been combining our resources and expertise together to build, to build county jails. Uh, nothing else. All of our facilities are designed specifically for the county's needs, for law enforcement needs, as well as the county's budgetary requirements also. Uh, there are no cookie cutter designs, each one is designed specifically for this county. Uh, a great benefit, we feel, for working with our team is we provide the county, at the beginning of the project, an accurate cost on your facility. You don't determine, the county does not determine what the cost is on this jail at the end of the project. You will know at the beginning of the project. We do this with something that is called a work session. Uh, and Jim will probably elaborate on this a little bit, as many of my comments will elaborate on. We bring in our architectural team members, our construction management team members. We sit down here for five or six days in this county, working with law enforcement, the sheriff, the jail administration, you putting together a conceptual plan and a number on this facility that is accurate. In twenty-one years, we have never, ever missed that number, not one time. Often, we're under budget. When we are, it's not uncommon, those savings stay with the county. We work on a straight fee basis, not overhead and profit, but a straight fee basis, so all those savings stay with the county. But twenty-one years, fifteen thousand beds, I'm gonna turn this over to Jim, he's got a little PowerPoint presentation for us.
You see up here on this slide, get that light and see if.
Yeah.
Huh, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. You see up here two logos, the SDC on the left and Spirit Architecture on the right. Andy mentioned the South Bill team. Reality, the South Bill team, or the South Bill name is a nickname. What we said were those first two logos, which I bet you if I said I give you five bucks, if you write them down, it, they're just too hard to remember, so we gave ourselves a nickname, those South Bill guys, South Bill team. The two groups, or the two firms, as Andy said, work as a team, construction management and architectural design. We use a standard AIA contract that have what they call companion contracts, owner architect, owner construction manager, and they have specific responsibilities. So, this, the team in actuality, in terms of operations, will be just like you went out and hired an architect or a construction manager. The difference is, is these two members know how to work together. And I always like to say, if you're gonna pull together an ad hoc basketball team, it's probably gonna perform better. If you've got guys that have played together before than guys that just have never met before. And, and we think the ability to hold costs and define specific things for the client is improved based on our having worked together for twenty years. So, that, that's South Bill. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about how we work, and Andy's already mentioned a work session, and then I'll show you a few pretty pictures, and then I'm gonna end with a little three-minute video, this whole thing, the presentation. Take maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, and then turn it back over to Andy. We've been doing this for over twenty years. Nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven, we got together and said, there's gotta be a better way. The idea of hiring some architect over here to design something, and then go six months of design process to find out what the thing's gonna cost, and then the low bidder is on this end, and you may or may not get someone who's experienced in doing jails. If you're doing an office building like this, that's one thing, but jails, a pretty specific thing, and it's a particular thing, and we think it's useful to have somebody who's done it before. This is our mission statement, it's serve rural detention needs, juvenile, adult. We do, and I'm proud to say, what I call country jails, county-level facilities, not state prisons, not federal prisons. We could do those, I've done some of that in the past. I am the architect from the spirit architecture side, that's my side. In fact, every project here, I'm the architect of record for, so just to give you a little feel of who you're talking to. This is something we focus in, in our teaming of South Bill, this is all we do. We don't do schools, we don't do office buildings, we don't do health departments, we work on justice-type projects, predominantly jails, us courthouses, courts, juvenile facilities, those kinds of things. So, there's probably not many things, there's always something we learn new, but there's probably not too many things. Sheriff Sean Cross is jail administrator that we've at least hadn't heard about or seen once or twice, or ourselves put our foot in the mud on. We use a special process, so again, you go out, hire an architect, construction manager, they will not necessarily use our work session process. This is something we developed twenty years ago, and the key to that is, is how can we define and tie down cost for you early, so you can expect something, and then at the end, get what you expect. One of the other key things about our process, and I like this as the architect, I can't be on the job every day. I can't even be there every week. But in, in our process, the construction manager has someone on the job site all day, every day during the whole process. The, that person would actually move here during the duration, and, and if you've got a building that you want to make sure block walls get filled with concrete and rebar, it's best to have somebody sort of overlooking the process. I don't know if you've had past experiences with that kind of thing, but we found that's very useful with jails. Okay, a little bit about the, how the construction manager versus the general contractor. Probably, in what you've done in the past, you're more used to the general contractor. In our process, the construction manager replaces the general contractor. So, there's no extra doubling up, tripling up the fees, that kind of thing. In a typical project, it's bid, if you look at that piece of pie with the pie slice, if you do a regular bid project, say this building, and a general contractor turns in a bid, a portion of that bid's gonna be his profit and overhead, and that's what that slice represents. It's usually somewhere in the ten or fifteen percent range. We eliminate that. It goes away. Then the construction manager and the architect simply work for the fee, and, and Andy mentioned that. So, we have a defined fee, we work for that fee, we put together a budget, any dollars saved from that, and the general contracting process wants a bid's given, let's just say it's a million dollars to do this building. Whatever the general contractor can save out of that buying materials cheaper, whatever, that's his profit, and that's the way the general bid process works. In our process, once we define a budget, and since we work for fees, any of those savings stay with the county. A hundred percent, we don't want any share, we don't want anything, a one hundred percent stays with the county. The other thing that we do, and this is big to us, because we think you get better service when this happens, and then in the long run, you'll be happier with our team, is that we try to bid all the work we can to local contractors and trades. If there's a good dirt man in the county, or in the next county over, or a good mechanical, electrical, and we can get them to bid, and they'll be low, then that's what we try to do. This is a public project, we're required by law in the way we do this construction management process, that every bid of the construction, one hundred percent of the hammer and nailing is bid. So, that's where we meet the laws on bidding. It's not at the construction manager, architect level, it's at the trades actually doing the work level, one hundred percent is bid. And, and it's bid above the table, you all are here, and let's say there's three plumbers that bid on the plumbing portion of the project. We will write back and advise, we've checked these three plumbers out, the little plumber is apparently good, he can bond the project. We recommend that you go with that little plumber, but ultimately, it's your choice. If you've had issues with that plumber, say you've had to finish a couple of projects, had other issues, you can make the choice to go with another one, but again, we'll evaluate and then recommend. We have found historically, about seventy-five to eighty percent of a project, or jail projects, the bids, the trade contractors are local and in the area. Now, there's some percentage, security electronics, security glazings, uh, security doors, some of those things, you're not necessarily gonna have a trade contractor from right around here, uh, to be able to bid that. So, there's certain percentage that'll be from, say, outside the county, or outside the multi-county area. But it, over the years, seventy-five to eighty percent has been in the area, if you will. Back nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, when we sat down to talk about this, this is what we saw. Uh, you could hire, and this is mostly with what we call the rural country, because if you're doing a two-thousand-bed prison, you'll have guys coming out of Atlanta, St. Louis, other places that do everything. But at the fifty, hundred, two-hundred-bed, three-hundred-bed facility, the big guys, it's not big enough to get their attention, and what you're left with is looking at an architect, or builders, or maybe a planner, somebody in the area or region you've got. And they're, they tend to be separate, so planner will be separate, the architect's separate, then if you bid it, the builder is separate. And, and at the end of the project, they all go home. And we thought, okay, if we're, if we could create any way that we could, we'd say that's a little nuts, having an experienced team that works together, and that's gonna be accessible later when issues come up, that would be good for the owner. So, we, this is sort of our idea, planning, design, construction, and then particularly later. We're there, you, we've got clients that we've worked with, we did projects for them twenty years ago, and they're coming back to us and asking us about this, that, or other, whether it's an expansion project, or gosh, we just got some doors that the electronics isn't working, who, who's in the business today that we can call? This is what we do on an ongoing basis. If you're doing, say, this building, we'd suggest you hire an architect or somewhere in the area. If you're gonna do the health department, get somebody for, but a jail, that's a special animal, and, and we think it's worth at least presenting ourselves and, and giving you something to consider. Where somebody's been there, it's a specialty, it's not, it's not just an easy, simple, commercial building. We can help you look at bed need, do some planning, what are the rules of thumbs for how many beds per thousand populated? What, what, what's conventions? And then site selection, we've gone through a lot of that, you can imagine, don't wanna buy daycare, or it's gonna be by a ball field. What have been the experiences of, we've been doing that for years and years and years, and can give you a lot of input and information that you can use to make some informed decisions. And then, we also have some private source finance contacts if you want. Although we have found over the years, the private source is more expensive than going to some kind of bond issue, whatever, some variable, it generally falls back to some sort of public bond issue, general issue bond. Uh, but, since this is what we do, we're experienced with this, again, we can give you the benefit of our experiences there. Andy mentioned a work session process, real simply, and that sort of red curve represents it. It's the least expensive to affect any decision you're gonna make, I don't care what it is, whether you can go buy a truck or plan a jail, it's the least expensive if you make your decisions early. And to make changes, it's the least expensive when it's on paper, as opposed to out in the field. So, knowing what you're doing, having a lot of experience, and then applying that experience early in the process, the less u-ohs you've got, and the less costing back, it's just all common sense. If you're a farmer or whatever business, you know that to be a fact. If you're new at something, you're gonna have some learning curve, that's gonna cost you some money. If you've planted that field in cotton for thirty years, you know what to expect. You're still gonna have u-ohs, gonna still have unexpected things, but the least cost is decision-making upfront. And we use that in our work session concept. That top blue bar represents our process, and the bottom two bars, and you can see the dark blue, where the little diamonds, where it says cost. The typical process, you have a funding point. You say, people, we'd like for you to support five million dollars, ten mil, whatever it would be, they do so. You bring on the architect and the team, and they design something, and it's only after some months that they bid it, and you find out what something's gonna cost. You've probably heard of school projects and other things that done like that. What we're saying is, let's get that costing done early. So, we know jail projects, we, you can see the little arrow to the cost, it happens before. So, well, we're not sure if we wanna ask the people to support five million or ten million, what? That's when we come in and do our work session process, and it's for a couple of reasons. One key one is to tie down cost early. But the other is, is the sheriff wants to do a hundred-bed new jail, or a ninety-bed expansion, we don't know the details. That work session, we come here onsite. Uh, this room is too small, but the commission room is large enough, or maybe there's a conference room at the sheriff's office. We bring in a team, probably two or three architects, two or three construction managers, and we literally develop a concept design with the sheriff and his jail administrator that reflects how they operate, and understanding that there's some key things that we wanna focus on, and I'm gonna touch on here in a little bit, that affects cost, where your real money's at. You all are funding the project, not necessarily running the facility, so cost is, is what your concern is. And we do that before you ever go to the people, say, we want you to support whatever, five million, ten mil, whatever it might be. And in this process that we've used for some twenty-two years on some sixty, seventy projects, we've never gone over that budget that's been established. And then any monies that, out of that budget are saved, you keep, period. In those books, there's a bunch of references, feel free to call them. We're based near Memphis. We've done work over a lot of states in the south, predominantly Tennessee, Arkansas, Oklahoma. We've done some design, we've never built a project yet in Alabama. We have designed a project, wasn't, hadn't been funded yet. Uh, we've designed several down in Mississippi when they had that shovel-ready money, shovel-ready money they never got. We've got a couple of projects in Louisiana, so we've worked in a lot of states, we're very familiar with all the jail standards. Alabama doesn't have a prescribed, prescribed set of jail standards. If you go to court in Alabama, they're probably gonna be looking at the American Corrections Association guidelines that the feds use. We're, we're very familiar with that stuff. We've done almost half a billion dollars' worth of what I call country jails. That's a lot of building. As Andy said, about fifteen thousand beds, over a million square feet. We're pretty well in budget. That's kind of our, our calling card, and to save, to stay with you. Lot of experience, I'm not gonna go through all these, everything you see, there's, there's no schools, roads, office buildings, wherever. It's all county-level jail facilities, lot of projects. All right, let me touch on something that I would think the commissioners would be interested in, but the sheriff would relate to this, and what it has to do with is how money translates out of your pockets on a jail facility. Shape affects staffing. Shape affects staffing, so everything in our design is, is based on minimum number of staff stations, seats we gotta have a bud in to watch inmates, best ability to control while minimizing cost. Give you some, so shape affects line of sight, and that affects the ability to control inmates. Uh, it probably has an aside, uh, and again, I don't know the current design layout that you've got, but the harder it is to see, the more potential issues you can have with vandalism, and having issues of things being tore up, and, and have to come in and spend money monthly on this or that, just ongoing maintenance issues, if line of sight is impaired. So, so that's, it's not designing a nice building with columns, it's not designing something that is extra strong, it's line of sight. Staffing is where your dollars are at. So, in a typical thirty-year building, the jail you've got, you've got is some years old now. In a typical thirty years of a bricks and mortar building, less than twenty percent of the actual dollars you'll spend is in the bricks and mortar. The great majority of that eighty percent is staffing. So, that's what you wanna do, and that's what I mentioned just before. Give you a real number, one full-time equivalent, so if somebody's gotta sit in this chair seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, it's gonna, you're gonna have to hire somewhere in a four to five people. Sheriff, I'm gonna ask you, I'm not asked this, roughly, what are you paying a jailer a year, just ballpark? Twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand?
Probably, uh, close to thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, and then you've got benefits on top of that.
Yeah, that's including benefits.
Oh, that's including, okay. If, if you look, and you're hiring four or five people to fill a position, then that's over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And the big difference is with that and jail construction cost, is that cost, if you create a situation where an extra seat has to be filled, or a seat has to be filled, that hundred fifty thousand dollars forever. You pay that forever. Construction note, whatever it be, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, it's gonna be finished. This is forever, and those are real hard numbers that you can look at and look, and you can probably look back at your experiences based on construction cost versus what you've ongoing staffing, talk with the sheriff, you'll find this to be true. And so, dollars, keys on staffing, staffing, keys on shape, ability to control the inmates. All right, let me just show you a couple, I'm gonna show you a dozen pretty pictures real quick, and then we'll end in that little three-minute video. We've done small projects, and, and I picked a wide range of different places where we've done designs, a little, little fifty-bed jail out in Oklahoma. This happens to be for the sheriff at the time, was state trooper that called Timothy McVeigh. Went on to become Sheriff Charlie Hanger, um, that's in Perry, Oklahoma. A little bit larger, this is a design Jefferson Davis, that we completed a design, again, they didn't get it funded. That shovel-ready money wasn't shovel-ready in Mississippi.
Shovel-ready money.
This is back, back with Obama after, uh, um, in the middle two thousands, where they were gonna try to do some federal monies to try to jumpstart the economy and stuff, and, and they, they called a shovel-ready, it was supposed to come out for projects ready to go. In Mississippi, they had some of the counties that said, well, we've got connections, our state senator, they got access to, had two or three contracts like that.
Yeah.
They never saw a dollar of that shovel-ready.
None of them did.
Yeah.
Well, that's one reason I'm asking, because I didn't know, my understanding, there's no federal monies to build. It's all in the county commission, each county.
You can get some dollars occasionally, and you've probably seen this USDA and some other places where they might give you fifty thousand or something for radios, or some cars, something like that, but nothing for buildings.
Right.
You're not out there. Pawnee, Oklahoma, ninety-bed jail. Each one of these, and you may not see it, but they're sort of a concentric design. Design affects staffing, line of sight, they're all what we call based on an apple pie idea. And that apple pie can be square, but a control point in the middle looking out into the pie slices. This is a ninety-bed version. Here's one's a little bit larger, about a hundred and fifty-bed concept, in Alabama, that's not been built yet, but you can kinda see it. Square of pie, controls in the middle, looking out into the pie slices. Every one of these will be a variation in that sort of concept, and it, at minimizing, line of sight, staffing drives all the dollars. So, it all drives from that. Not all the apple pie has to be built at once. In fact, generally speaking, we'll do projects where it's partial apple pies. Here's one, this is up in Haywood, Kansas, the Justice Center. This is, happens to be the first Walmart location east of the Mississippi. The big rectangle is the courts and other things, and you see over there in red on the right is the apple pie, that's the housing.
The housing behind that building, you got the Justice Center in front.
Right here.
Yes.
That's new, and then this part, you see right here, that's a new face put on a Walmart. That square there is the old Walmart, you got the sheriff's office, booking intake, and then courts, and then room left for expansion. In fact, they put a nine-one-one in there, and, and did some tornado safe space in there. And if you're thinking about a justice complex.
We are, we're, we're actually thinking about it.
We're very familiar with courts and the issues and stepping over into that. Our basic idea is, we want people in a court building only meeting at the points of transaction. So, the simple idea there is, the public comes from the sun, front side.
Right.
The staff circulates behind, and inmates also, and they only meet in the courtrooms or in the clerks' offices at the points of transaction. So, it, it, again, a way of controlling, uh, the traffic in a courts building that you can't do with old-time courthouses. They all come into the middle rotunda and go up and down the stairs, it's all coming, never set up to do what this is set up to do. Another one in Marshall County, Tennessee, again, you can see the apple pie.
Right. How many inmates per?
This is a three-hundred-bed.
I know, but in each red area.
It'll vary, uh, in some of these, it'll be dormitories, so it might be twenty-four to up to thirty-six. And some of the others, we may have cells, and it may be a lower count, higher-security inmate, that may be twelve, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-four. And then how you divide the pie up, you can see, it tends to divide naturally into eight, but sometimes you can take one of those pie slices and divide that into two. If you've got real high-security inmates, they may be instead of having one pie slice that handles, say, twenty-four, thirty-six, you may have, divide that into two that handles twelve or fourteen, in two-person cells. I talked about the work session when we come design it here, that's the kind of thing we're talking through. You sort of have a concept to work from, but how do you wanna split it up? How do you wanna classify inmates? What kind of inmates do you have that need classification? Handle higher, lower security, male, female, different combinations.
And that's, and that's a major part of the cost determination, sheriff, is exactly what you just referenced.
Yes, I, I understand that.
Is the ratio of individual cells to dormitory.
The more you do dormitories, the less it'll cost, I understand that.
Law enforcement generally gonna want two-person or single cells in concept. Funders are gonna prefer all dormitory. Funders are concerned with cost, law enforcement's gotta run the facility, so you gotta find that balance in there to get you what you need. We go to the large facility too, this is Crawford, and in this case, you can see that the apple pie is not a square any longer. Once you get a certain size, then we recommend looking at what we call the octagon. Once you get a certain size, then we recommend looking at what we call the octagon. And it divides up into a different combination, but still, concept's the same thing. I'm in the middle, where I can see a maximum number of locations from a single point minimizing staff. Shape factor by staff, that's where your dollars are at. We, we drive from the same thing, and then you can see here what an interior it looks like. This is over Crawford County, Arkansas. Now, I'm about to show you a little three-minute video on this. This is a small one-hundred-bed jail in Walnut Ridge. It's a half-circle, so it can easily double to two-hundred plus, and you can add by pie slice. One control point, so even into the future, you get into efficiency with that staffing. So with this, I'm gonna show you just a, again, just three minutes, excuse the narrator. Can you hear that? Here, let me. Let's see if I can get the volume up on that little ground.
I can hear the rain.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can get pretty regular here, let me.
I got fertilizer out just in time.
If you don't wash it away.
Don't wash it away. Most of it's flagrant.
Oh, that's kinda funny.
The television?
Hello there, my name's Jim Lightford, I'm with the South Bill team. We're at the Lawrence County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center in Walnut Ridge, Arkansas, spring of twenty-eighteen, and we're getting ready to open this facility. We're gonna take inside here in just a moment and look at the main areas of what makes up a detention facility, the sheriff's office, a lobby area, uh, sheriff's area, the jail support area, the intake processing area, and the jail housing. That'll be true. Sally porch. Entake.
When you intake there, you have to stick yourself one in a few rounds, come in.
Can, and depends on how you wanna have it. Package pass. Housing area. That's the control room looking out into the housing area. Commercial kitchen. Andy, I'm turning back to you.
I wanna get somebody better looking than you, maybe I'll. I told one on the budget. Uh, thanks, Jim. Couple of points that Jim hit on, you know, the brick and mortar, uh, is not the true cost, staffing is the true cost of the facility. Uh, we emphasize local trade, it's important to us, we know that's important to the county as well. Uh, you know, one thing we do is, uh, in my counterpart who handles, uh, west of the Mississippi is, uh, we wanna be a very big part of this process. And what on occasion we will do is, a- as part of the teams, we'll attend county fairs, Kiwanis meetings, with a chart, with the jail laid out of the chart, trying to assist the commission in helping the county understand the project that you're looking at. Uh, Jim commented on the team aspect between a architectural firm and a construction management firm, uh, working together. You're not gonna get the surprises that, that you're gonna get sometimes when you have an architectural team and a construction team that have never worked together before. Jim alluded to a scenario of, uh, a basketball team or, or, or a surgical, surgical team in a hospital. You want players that have played together, uh, in a process like that. Uh, we've done facilities, fifteen beds, seven-hundred beds in size. Uh, we are recently, uh, have been, uh, asked to look at a, a facility in Great Falls, Montana, uh, that we were, uh, invited to come look at. Um, we may, may or may not pursue that, my boss likes to fish, so we may end up, we may end up doing that, who knows? But, uh, I wanna thank you for this opportunity, uh, we, we appreciate it very much. Sheriff, thank you for being here, and I'd like to open the floor, and any questions you gentlemen might have for us.
Do y'all strictly build block buildings? Or do you go, do y'all handle that building, metal building? And then with the facilities inside that, or?
We, we ha, in fact, we've got some slides, one particular I'm thinking about is Johnston County, Tennessee, where you build essentially a metal building on the outside, and you come inside and put a block building, or you can put metal cells, or do some combinations. You'd think that would be cheaper.
But it's not.
Not necessarily, because you're varco-prudent, you're standard metal building people, they don't like you connecting the metal building structurally to the block. If you think about it, if you're just designing from cold, you're gonna get your greatest efficiency if you can use your block jail building on the inside to help seismically and to structurally handle the metal building. They don't like it, they like to sell their metal building as a kit. You get into issues, so if you're asking, do you do a metal building, put a jail in it, we'll do it. But you may not save the money you think you're going to. Typical hundred, two-hundred-bed jail, probably most economical block. But it, the, it, once you get above that, and you some larger ones, precast, three-hundred beds, four-hundred beds, justice complexes, what you're looking for is most bang for your buck, and, and so that's what we found.
Which, which way is the cheapest to go up or to go out?
Out, and now in general, what size are you thinking, give me a ballpark.
Three-hundred beds.
I would say out, 'cause.
Probably two-seventy-five or two.
Because in my mind, e- even the ones, the largest ones we've got are seven-hundred beds, they tend to go out. Now, we say out, a lot of those housings you saw were stacked, had a mezzanine, now that is with that. But, but once you do a full pie, is it better to go up and do another pie, or is it better to go beside it to do a pie? We say generally go beside it, plan to go beside it. There's a couple of reasons for that. If you design a building today to go vertical, in ten years, uh, structural codes will have changed, and you may or may not be able to take that building vertical. Then you got other issues, you're trying to build on top of inmates, those, those kinds of things. Generally, for the size you're thinking about, I'd say horizontal.
That's what I would say.
And then the, it's cheaper to add on, that would be.
Horizontal. The other part of it is from his staffing point of view, even if your costs, say, were the same, if you don't have to have his staff wrestling with elevators, stairs, escalators, and believe it or not, there's some jails, it, it's just gonna be safer and easier to manage. It's easier to respond, say if you had a second floor here, if your people up front go, we need help, we need help, you can hear them and you can respond. But if there's an upstairs, they may not hear. That's a real issue in a jail. So if you're downtown Huntsville, downtown Nashville, downtown Memphis, and you've got to go up, that's one thing. Here, I'll.
You've got spaces, better to go out.
Be less expensive, I would think.
And we run into that too, of the, uh, when you go second floors, their bars are just level four foot or whatever, they're jumping off them trying to kill, you got stuff that need to go all the way up.
We have, we have done that, you, you notice they had mezzanines. We've done it where we put caging and whatever all the way up, and so if that's what you want, we can do that. But what we found is, is you gotta have the stairs up to that area, so if they wanna jump or throw down the stairs, you can do it. The other thing we found, and this is true, we put a mesh up where they couldn't get over or anything. The inmates were climbing up the outside of the mesh on the outside. So you solve one problem, you can create another problem, so.
Yeah, Sheriff, I was thinking of another sheriff recently, said if these inmates could be as creative on the outside world, or on the inside of this jail, they could do a good job.
Well, they got twenty-four hours of age, so.
A lot of times.
They're wrapped, uh.
What they can tire up. Do you have a cost estimate, just say, per square foot? What y'all's average sale would run per square foot?
You, you remember back, Andy said, one of the big things is whether you want all dorm, or how many cells, and all those. Makes it per square foot kinda hard to, I can say, say three-hundred bed. We showed you one at three-hundred bed, the octagon, because you said three-hundred bed. It's set up to be able to turn into a justice complex. Two or three years ago is when that was completed, that's Crawford County, Bamburgh, Arkansas. They had a twenty-million-dollar budget, three-hundred and eight beds, I think. We built it for seventeen million, they saved three million dollars. Now, I don't, I don't know if we could build that building here for you, I don't even know if you'd want that building, but it gives you an idea.
County where you look at.
Thinking they were around forty thousand or so. In that case, they told us how many beds they wanted, they wanted a minimum of, I think, two-hundred-and-eighty or two-hundred-and-ninety. But we designed it to where it had some alternates in the package, which meant if the beds were good, they could build this additional housing. In their case, they were able to build all the alternates and still save several million dollars.
How did they pay for it?
They went bond issue. Almost, almost all ours is some kind of bond issue.
How do you pay the bond payment? How did?
I- in their case, they, they had the people pass, in Arkansas, as opposed to Tennessee, in Arkansas, to build a jail, you have to go to a vote of the people, in almost every case, it's a sales tax vote. Almost a hundred percent. I think we've done one project there where they had another revenue source up in Fayetteville, Arkansas, to build a small juvenile facility on a declared emergency, and, and you can do it and build it as long as you're not committing taxpayers' money. What they did was able to commit some fees, uh, inmates and other things, they had some fees they could commit to, to build it. But almost a hundred percent of the time, it's, it's a sales tax. And, and I know here in Alabama, you've got some things you gotta go through with getting the state legislature to approve your ability to go.
We're about thirty thousand population, what you really, when you go into a county that size.
The rule of thumb is four beds per thousand in the south. The national average is, uh, about three-point-two-five beds per thousand population. But down in the south, where the arrest rates and things are just higher, it's about four-point-nine beds per thousand, uh, in the south. So you're, you're, I'm, I'm sorry, three-point-nine beds per thousand, so you're running about four beds per thousand, roughly. And that's the general population, then if they.
About a hundred and twenty beds.
Somewhere there. But that's today now. What we recommend is if you're gonna do a bond issue, which is most of them, you're probably gonna have a, I say ballpark, twenty-year note, give or take. You want to project out what you think the population's gonna be twenty years from now, and make sure you got enough beds to cover the note. Cause you don't wanna be ten years into your note, at least I wouldn't wanna be, and have a need, uh, need to add on, say, another fifty beds, and I'm still not paid for my jail.
What's the difference in the cost, let's say, you said, well, go on the max three-hundred bed, if we drop to the two, minimum, two-fifty for the max, what, how much cost difference are there in that, in that hundred sale?
That hundred bed that you just saw the last little video on?
Yeah.
And I realize it's a little bit less what you're talking about, that was a, uh, that got built a year or so ago for about, I think about seven or eight million dollars, if I'm remembering right.
That's for the two, the, how many?
For the hundred beds.
Yeah.
And then, so that three-hundred beds is about seventeen million actually got built for.
Difference?
That's, that ballpark.
Was that all jail, or was there a judicial building in there?
In both cases, it was just jail. Uh, the Crawford County had nine-one-one, there is a courtroom in Crawford County. So as you get bigger, you get some economy of scale. Cause it, it, if you might imagine, if you have a control room, that control room is managing, let's say, seventy-five inmates. Well, that same control room can manage a hundred and fifty inmates, and so that control man, control room, you gotta have, no matter how many inmates you've got. So as you go up, you're gonna get some economy.
Let me ask you this, on the, on the two-hundred to two-fifty, if, if you done it for the, say, two-twenty-five, would you, would the, would the building have in the pie you're calling it, space to add in the other twenty-five when needed?
A, a typical pie. Oh, yeah, you did, okay. The size you're talking about, I would say, think about it, is this the right kinda marker?
Yeah, well, it's like wash it out.
In a, in a typical eight. Let's, let's just assume here, I'll get this real right. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, okay, pie slices on the right. Your typical octagon, if it's all dorm, it's gonna be around two-ninety to three-hundred. If it's all dorm, if it's all cell, it's gonna be around two-forty to two-fifty. Now, and, and the reason for that is, is you got certain, uh, guidelines as far as square footage for inmates. And so dormitory's got less walls, more inmates, and the cells more walls, less inmates. So that's your, that's your number, so let's say you're doing two-hundred, let's just use that as an easy thing. What you may do then, and then this would be set up to fill in the pie slices.
Later on.
Later on, if, we went back in there and I showed you, uh, White County, I don't know if it was in that bunch or not, but I've got it in there. White County, that's what you see. Who in here played Pac-Man years ago? It, it kinda looks, from an aerial, looks like a Pac-Man. At Washington County, what they've done then, we did that, almost like fifteen years ago. And they've come back and they've asked us to fill back in those pies based on what they need it now, and that's what we've done.
For the future.
And then what you do is you set this up with a corridor that comes in from the main jail park, but you also, at some point, depending on your site, it may be here, it might be here, but what you do is you design in a corridor going out. And then there's two things you can do. Then another pie can be added here in the future, when your grandson's at, or you come up with another.
Oh, my grandson in there.
Well, now, he, he might be in your shoes, being a commissioner, or you can add another pie here, though. The Washington County, the seven-hundred one, we've got two pies sitting side by side that come into a corridor from the housing.
Okay, another question I have, and this is, this is a theory, on the judicial system. If right now, all we can afford is the jail, okay? If our senators representatives come in with, with us some money down the road, three to five year, and we could build, we, we want a judicial system about not having to transfer like you was talking about to save money, how much trouble is that to add on cost-wise and stuff to, to tie it together with it?
You might, you may remember this on a picture, but you may not. There was one that was sorta like this, that's Crawford County.
Right.
And, and if you notice it, there was a big front yard. Well, the way it's set up is, you come in and there's a courtroom right here next to the control line, so the inmates come in from one side, and the public come in from the other, and the judges come in from the other, and the sheriff's office is here. But the reason this big front yard is here is so a full courts complex can be added at the front later. So this is set up to do just what you're saying. We've even had them where they couldn't even afford a sheriff's office, and what we did was we built the jail park and came back and added the sheriff's office. But it's a little bit like, if you have a house, and you know the different pieces of a house, if it's bedrooms you wanna add later, then you know kind of where. if it's bedrooms you wanna add later, then you know kind of where you need to have that expansion. If it's more bathrooms or den or game room that you, you kinda know where to leave those gaps. We've done this enough that we know where to leave the gaps.
Now, we, we're gonna have to build it where we can add on in the future, whether we're out here or not. Cause my numbers today is a hundred and seventy-one in my county jail right now. To house eighty-six people.
So you def- uh, uh.
You know.
The four beds per thousand we've talked about?
Just out the window.
Once, once that's established off, then you gotta look at other things. Do you have a major interstate running through your county? Do you have vacation things like lakes or other things, resorts? There are different, or do you have major manufact- sometimes there are other factors that will add to that population that you gotta account for, not just your base population.
Uh, I know. I mean, that's.
And that's what you're.
You know, I double it. You know, when I, when I said three hundred beds, what, for the last five years, I was averaging a hundred and fifty a day. Now, just about three months ago, four months ago, I had a hundred and eighty. We had court, had different things going on. I got down to one fifteen again, three weeks ago. Well, guess what? Today's one seventy-one. So it's always with the high number.
We got a hundred and eighty-six.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't, but my thing, yeah, I know how, I know where the money is. The money is in cells. Dormitory is the right way to go. Um, I'm gonna have to have X amount, number of cells for the worst of the worst that we house. We had one time, had ten, eleven, kept murderers in jail, in the county. Sex offenders is a big thing. You have to segregate. I understand that. Y'all get that. Uh, the, you know, as far as dormitory, I think we can get by with, with a lot of that. I really do. And I swear the cost saving, I understand that. The booking area that I asked about.
Oh, separation male, female?
Yes. Now, you know, we have a lot of people come in that's actually bondable within seventy-two hours or in and out. Instead of what we have to do now is, you know, dress them out, put them in population, the next morning they get out, cause they're able to make bond. But I would like to have, you know, separation of male and female in seventy-two hour, in the booking area. That would be an idea.
Where you can book them.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta segregate, you gotta segregate male and female. And see, my female population is on the rise. I have forty-four, forty-four females.
That's the fastest growing.
I know. And I also wanna ask you, is that the trend nationwide? If it is in Alabama?
Every, e- every county I call on in four states, and I think my counterpart's the same way, it's the same. Women's spike in population is dramatic.
Ninety percent of it's drug related.
A- as well as mental health.
Mental health and.
Spiking of that as well.
Yeah. We built, this jail was built in late seventies.
Seventy-nine.
Uh.
Seventy-eight with design.
How much is technology?
A lot.
Uh, cut down on staffing.
Performance.
Uh, I mean, uh, how many more people would it run, uh, the day that jail opened? Uh, how many would it take same now, people or less people to run this jail today?
I don't know how your current jail, is it, is it, uh?
You know what, you know, with seventy-nine, would you know about what kinda, what kinda technology you want?
It's not the technology. There's, there's three basic kinds of inmate management systems. The, there's the old Alcatraz. The old Alcatraz is the spoken wheel, where you can, sort of like your old schoolroom. And you got hallways doing this, and you got inmate housing like that. That's first generation. Then this is called second direct, uh, generation, direct observation, where you get somebody in control and looking like that. Back in the seventies, eighties, even to into the nineties, there were still people doing this kinda design. I don't.
That's what I have.
You've got this. Okay, this is gonna be more staff intensive if he's up to staff and he's actually watching everyone. Now, so this in theory is more s- staff efficient than this, but I don't know how he's actually got this staff.
Well, how many staff members take to run a three hundred bed jail?
If, if we went to, uh, uh, Crawford County right now, what you'd see is probably two people here during the day. Sometimes at night on the graveyard, do you twelve-hour shifts or eight-hour shifts?
Eight hours.
That third eight-hour shift, you might could have just one person in here because everybody's theoretically locked down, they're not going to court, other things. There'll be some movement, people being arrested. So you might be, so two people there, you probably got somebody in booking intake. And then on the late shift, you probably got a rover. So you're probably talking maybe three to four on the graveyard shift at least. And then during the day, it's gonna adjust based on how his power shifts work. What that has to do with his feeding inmates, putting out medication, that kinda thing. What's your staffing now over here?
Eight jails.
On every shift?
No, total.
Total.
So I'm understaffed anyway.
That, he's, see, he's understaffed now, so what I'm telling you, you may not even wanna hear, because he's short-staffed now.
Well, you gotta hear, you gotta pay for it.
Well, I know, but I'm, I'm just saying.
I know, wow.
It, it, you got eight, so you probably, what, running on the average of maybe two, max three per shift?
Have two on day shift and two on second shift. Seven to seven, I run one jail.
You probably deal with a lot of vandalism and inmates.
Everything, everything. Because the way the jail is designed, you have pods, you have two.
Well, you can't see anything except by camera.
See, well, I had to add so many cameras. That's how we monitor. Well, how, uh, how much has building today cut down on vandalism? What, I mean, surely, but you can't tear up mortar and stainless steel.
Oh, yes you can. If you're not, if you're not watching them, yes you can. If we build.
They can hammer and saw away from them.
If, if, well, you laugh about that. I can take you to a facility over, I won't say where it's at, and they got power saws in there. Using power saws, how loud would power saws be in this building? Everybody could hear.
Marshall can?
They were using power saws and officers didn't even know it. That's because nobody's back there watching them.
Dremels.
Yeah.
Those smooth dremels.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Catching a lot of those.
Yeah.
But this concept does allow you to see more readily. And so unless the guy in the control room is asleep, and that's why we recommend putting a camera in the control room that goes to the sheriff's office, so you can see what the officer's doing. Unless that officer's asleep.
I have one now.
The, the other thing, in some of the places we go and we like this, is that the person in the control room is only there three or four hours a shift. Even though they're there for eight hours or twelve hours, they're only in the control room and they rotate them out because they tend to just sort of lose it. And so you, you need to move them around, do other things so they can wa- when they're in there, they're attentive to the cameras and watching what the inmates are doing. What, you might imagine, we've done a whole lot of these. And Sheriff, what we just kinda went through here
Yes.
is sort of what the work session's like. We get in here with you and we've gone through your jail. And as we start to lay it out, it's based on what's coming out of your head instead of us coming in with a cookie cutter. And we know some concepts that are good and useful, but it's tailored the way you operate.
Right.
See, right now, one of the things you've discovered in this conversation is, even though our concept may be more efficient, your costs may not change or go up staff because he's short-staffed now. My, my thinking is, is he probably, even with our concept, probably needs to be twice, maybe three times the numbers you've got.
Twice. If you had twice, you could run twelve-hour shifts, cause you get better coverage.
That's what you wanna do, twelve-hour shifts?
That's what I'm working toward, cause you get better coverage with less, little less people.
Yes.
My deputies are doing that now and have been, cause it's just more efficient. With only eight jailers, I can't run. Let me ask you a question, any females? The females housed, like in that one pie, would you have in one?
What we do is depending on how many you want, let, let's say, let's say we're doing a two hundred, and let's say we've got this left out. And that one or two, and maybe we come in here and divide a pie. And then we've got a corridor that kinda surrounds us. We may define a segment that's all female. What we might do is define a segment as female and then have a swing unit. And then how we handle, what we like to do is whereas the males, you'll come down the hall, come down the hall, there'll be a door into the dayroom. With the females, we put a sa- a saliport, so that the doors into the females, you're, the main hallway, then you gotta go through a door into a saliport before you go into the female area. You're sweeping and cleaning, your trustees, that minimizes their ability to be looking in on the women and those kinds of things. Yet up above the control room, they can see down on them. And then generally speaking, we recommend thinking about having women up in the control room. Generally, it's more accepted to have women watching men than men watching women.
That's true.
And then you can set this up to where you've got different increments for female, and maybe, and maybe at forty-something, you might, you might not need. It might be more like that be the swing. And so you'd have a female unit set up, maybe two small ones, and then an area that in the future that could become an additional female, depending on how you add housing later. So that your women are clustered together. And then getting in their exercise yards and all that kinda thing becomes how you set it up for your male, female. Again, we do it sitting down with you.
Right.
We're taking up your day and y'all got a regular meeting to do, so.
Well, I appreciate y'all coming today.
Thanks for having us. We appreciate it.
What about a lot of people else? Uh, what? Uh, thanks to, uh, jail, that people, a lot of people be needed too as far as exercise, television. Of course, no, no heating and cooling is not, uh, but do all jails have access to all these seemingly things that's, uh, uh, for entertainment?
That people see as extravagant.
Yeah.
Extra benefits.
Okay, I, I, part, part of it's how you speak about it. Years and years ago, twenty, twenty-five years ago, when we first did some jails, we labeled some exercise areas rec areas. No, no, you don't call it a rec area, not for inmates. It's a, it's an exercise area. You identify by ACA guidelines, other guidelines where they recommend being able to have a certain amount of access to outside exercise. So to the degree that you wanna adhere to ACA guidelines and knowing you, you're gonna probably be safe going into court, you identify that. Uh, and then televisions, they're not a luxury, they're a management tool. They're a way of controlling inmates. They're a way of minimizing vandalism. And, and, and that's a true thing. Now, you say, okay, we don't wanna put television in there. Fine, it's your call. We'll leave it out. We could put conduit in the system where you can add it later, but that's what it is. It's a management tool. It's like the telephone's a management tool. It's a way for him to control and influence what the inmates do.
What, what it is, 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 it's a right and a privilege. There's difference in a right and a privilege, okay? TVs and phones and commissary, that's the way I discipline inmates. If they unruly, I take it away. I cut the TV off, I do whatever. So.
If they've got television set there and watch, they're not over here turning something up.
Right. But if they're, if they, if I have a ride, which I had before, they tear up something, I have a fight, then I discipline them by that ride.
Yeah.
Take it away.
It's like taking a teenager's phone away nowadays.
That's, that's, that's where we at. Cause they're in jail, you can't do anything else to them.
Thank you.
Y'all got any other questions for? Appreciate y'all coming.
Thank you, sir. And real informed.
Yeah. Give me how long your, what do you need?
It's, I need a signature and they're glad to explain. It's all I gotta do.
Okay, well, you go ahead. No, I'm sorry, Ms. Tice, first anyway. Uh, uh, you, you, Ms. Tice?
Moore. Moore. Are you ready?
Yes, I am. Good morning. My name is Amanda Clement Tice, and I'm a workforce solutions specialist with Double State Community College. Um, I'm native to Hamilton, and it's nice to be home here, especially when we have such good news to share with you today. And I'd like to introduce our Dean of Workforce Solutions and Economic Development, Al Moore. And then following him will be Marcus Carson, who is our division chair for the truck driver training program.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Certainly thank the commission for this opportunity to, to come and share with you.
We apologize for the, uh, for the.
Oh, that's why, it's quite all right, quite all right. Well, but, you know, we're really excited about the prospect of starting truck driving, uh, in Hamilton. Uh, and we know that the commission has, has talked a little bit about it and heard a little bit about the use of airport. One, one thing I wanna say on behalf of president as well, is we thank you for the opportunity to use that space to bring this program. Truck driving is one of the highest needs in the state of Alabama. And every industry around the state, uh, they're, they need drivers, because I mean, it's huge as far as when you think of logistics and moving, uh, merchandise from one place to the other. Um, we need truck drivers. And that's, uh, that's a unique opportunity, I believe, based on twenty-two. Uh, I twenty-two being a direct link between Memphis and Birmingham and Hamilton being located where it is. It makes good sense, uh, to start a program here. The college is financially strapped at this particular time, um, but we're maneuvering through our, our issues. Uh, but we've been able to get some funding, uh, through, uh, Workforce Investment Opportunity Act to be able to start this program. Uh, our goal is to start it small and hopefully grow it and sustain it as well. Uh, we've identified some classroom space, uh, on the Hamilton campus to be able to have the class, uh, uh, opportunity there. And then through, uh, generosity of the commission, be able to use the airport, uh, for the actual, uh, training ground. Um, in order to be able to do that, this is a draft copy of memorandum of, I guess I'll leave that for. Memorandum of, of agreement that we have to have for the two-year college system, uh, and the college, uh, and the commission. This is a draft document just outlining our use of the, uh, the airport facility. Um, and, uh, I know that when we met with, I think our, our first meeting was with Keith, you were in that meeting, weren't you? No, it must've been Kenneth and Dale.
Yeah.
We met with Kenneth and Dale. And so one of the things that I wanted to do, cause he, he mentioned that you all, you know, could vote on this today, but I, I wanted you to have time to look at this. Uh, and so he said that the next meeting is on the fifteenth.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So, um, it would be wonderful. We're looking to hopefully start the class on the twenty-second. Uh, and Marcus Carson is here, and Marcus is our, uh, our program chair for truck driving. And I've asked him to come and share specifics about the actual program that will be happening here in Hamilton.
As Dean Moore said, I'm Marcus Carson, and I'm the division chair of the truck driver training for the college. Um, this program will be, uh, it's set up as a seven-week course. Um, it's gonna have a ready-to-work certification on with it. So we'll teach some, uh, soft skill stuff that will, um, uh, make these even better, uh, employees once they get their CDL license. So, um, yeah, we'll do, uh, our yard exercise training in the, at the airport. Um, our hope is that, uh, we can set up another, uh, test route in Hamilton so we can test CDL drivers as well, along with the training. So that's our, that's our goal. We'll have to go to the Department of Public Safety, uh, and I'll have to talk to the Sergeant Duke down there at Montgomery to get that set up. So that's our ultimate goal. And as Dean Moore said, this is a, a grant-funded, uh, program. So, uh, we hope that this'll kinda be the start of something that we can grow on. Um, uh, all the students will be going through the Career Center over here. So anybody wants to apply, they need to go to Career Center, and that's where, uh, they'll have to go through that process. Uh, like you said, the twenty-second is hopefully our start date. We're still, uh, working on instructor and all the different things, but, uh, hopefully it's all gonna come together for the twenty-second is the goal. Any questions for me on the?
Will there be a fee for people, of course, taking the course? It'll be, that will, uh, right with.
Uh, you talking about the, the fee for the course?
Season course, yeah.
Yes, sir. And, uh, and, uh, once again, that the WIWA program, it's, the grant is through. And, uh, the students will be going through that program as well. Like I said, the Career Center is where they'll do with that. Uh, I think the cost we said is thirty-six.
Thirty-five, sixty-seven, fifty.
Thirty-five, sixty-seven, fifty.
We have to, I will have to renew our CDL each, uh, our drivers, county drivers.
Well, they just, um, I'm not sure how, from their, every time the driver license renews, it renews.
But they don't have to retake.
No, they will have to do the driving test sometime. We'll be administering hopefully the driving test for this area, cause that used to happen here, you know, they used to do that, but they shut it down here recently.
Can you, can you read it back?
Uh, I don't believe so.
I think it would really spring it up and bring it on like you said, we can work with the state where we can go give it a test.
Engineering over at the, uh, airport.
That, that's my goal, and I thought Sergeant Duke, uh, they have certain guidelines because of the third-party testing that we have to follow. So it has to go through his process and, and him okaying that.
I think the closest place we have now, or you gotta go to even Florence.
I think Florence is y'all's closest place.
If you do that, you gotta tie up somebody to go with them in the trucks and stuff. That'd be, I think it'd be nice if we could get it back to Hamilton where you could do the test. If you do, if you do that, you gotta type somebody to go with them in the trucks and stuff. That'd be, I think it'd be nice if we could get it back in Hamilton where you could do your testing there.
That, that is my goal.
I think.
I do too.
Yeah, yeah, it, it'd be very, very beneficial for this area.
Our attorney also is, is sick today. Uh, we called him before the meeting. He's, he's also in bed today, so, uh, soon as, uh, he gets back and our engineer looks over this, we'll be able to make some decision, muddy him here. We appreciate you coming by.
Yes, indeed.
We're, I think, uh, we're looking, we're excited about, uh, this happening, our county.
Perfect, uh, once we get it started, if there's any issues, any problems, let's pick up pretty contact me and, and we'll definitely work, do whatever we need to do.
Your last name was what, Marcus?
Marcus Carson.
Carson.
Yes, sir, C-A-R-S-O-N.
Carson?
Carson, C-A-R-S-O-N.
C-A-R-S-O-N.
I got a card out in the car, got to bring it. I'll bring it.
Thanks, sir.
That was quite a, advantage, and quite an asset to get.
Well, we're planning on hopefully getting this started and hopefully grow it. That's what, uh, me and Dean Moore has actually talked about coming over this area for many years.
Yes, indeed, yes.
Me and him have discussed a long time. And so, uh, this, uh, I'm very excited about this and, and growing. Uh, we got a very successful program in Somerton, Alabama, so we wanna make that same impact over here.
We're glad to have you.
Yeah, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, now, please, well, I've got around to you, the, uh. Give it.
Thank you, Mr. Bob. Thank you all once again. Bob, what I'm bringing before you today is, uh, my salary supplement from the state on my EMPG grant. Uh, EMPG Emergency Management Performance Grant. The state kicks in a ten thousand dollar a year subsidy for my salary, because I am Clem certified. Clem is certified level emergency manager. I have to have certain classes each year, ten workshops, and some, uh, meetings, and, uh, things of this nature. I've got them done every year, continue to keep them up, keep it up. And we continue to get this ten thousand dollar grant, goes towards my salary. I'm coming at this time to actually sign it. All three pages are ju- are the same, but one copy is for us, one copy is for the state, one copy is for.
So without this, we would have to supplement?
Without that, you lose ten thousand dollars. Yep, do this every year. Yes, it, it, it's a continuing thing every year. I have to, I have to keep my certification up, and that's why they keep, it's not a lifelong thing.
Do I hear motion, we sign this for the subsidy?
I'll say.
Oh, where's the, I think that you, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir, thank you, Jim.
What's this resolution, like, uh, uh, look, uh, this resolution here, we got?
H triple R?
Yeah.
It's, it's mine.
That you? Go right ahead.
Yes, sir. Um, we talked at the work session last week. This is a H triple R construction agreement and resolution. When we're installing guard rail on those from fifty-six and forty.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yep. And, um, just recommend that the commission enter into that agreement, the state, and adopt that resolution to accomplish that work.
Since we lost out on fifty-two.
Yeah, I, I just say, I gotta get them to take that out of the, out of the resolution, but we can get that.
Does this resolution still occur, or are we?
No, I, that, I gotta move it now, I have to get it to you. But it'll be entering into agreement and adopting a resolution on H triple R project, eighty-five, fifty-six, and.
Um, hear motion, we enter in this guard rail.
I'll make that motion.
Forty-seven.
Uh, I say aye.
And I've also got a, um, construction agreement resolution on that old Highway seventy-eight, the one that.
Yeah.
And, and of course, in the agreement, they refer to it as old state route seventy-four, which is one of the same. But I would recommend that the commission enter into that agreement, the state, to accomplish that work, and also adopt a resolution in support of it.
I hear motion, we accept that.
Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of S state public road, state public road bridge in Zerro County. Unless there's a cost overrun, then we could have some.
Yes.
I'll make that motion. I'll say.
Oh, where's the aye?
Aye.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, uh, we had a full-time open, and I recommend that we have, that we employ Mr. Timothy Gibbs as an unclass- unclassified probationary employee. He served it to six months probationary period, and he was billed a vacancy left of counter channel.
Oh, you're replacing, not adding to?
Right, replacing.
I hear motion, we, and this, or replaces Kevin.
I say.
Oh, where's the aye?
He'll start at thirteen fifty prior to what we do, and that, and our other, uh, question.
What'd you, what'd you say, Simon?
Timothy Gibbs.
Gibbs.
Yes, sir. That's it.
They have, give me to sign those things.
Yeah, I, let me get that, that chain on, on that guard rail, um, take the counter to the panel.
All right, uh, he gave you a copy.
Yes, yes.
It was too late to get in, they substituted on fifty-two for something.
Yeah, this, you know, we can reapply. Again, they're gonna offer that same program again this year, um, so we can reevaluate.
Question I was asking, we can't get that money used on guard rail somewhere else, because it had to be used on any.
That's right. It, it was part of, it was a part of this middle, and part of this project, scope of this work, and it, it'll have to be done on, on addition. But we didn't need, we didn't need to put that guard rail out. It wasn't, it didn't, it wasn't gonna work. Just wasn't gonna work, no.
I would rip them off.
It's nothing to tie it to.
At some point, we'll have to look at replacing that code.
Good thing.
When's, uh, when's, uh, go ahead on code on Highway eleven? Eighteen eleven?
Oh, you, you, you counted nine at the bridge, you mean?
Nine, nine, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, um, we're waiting on the notice to proceed. We, we had contract documents.
Will there be a, a time limit on that?
Yes, there'll be so many days working, uh.
No, it hasn't started yet, no.
No, the time hasn't started yet.
Okay, okay.
I think there's thirty or forty-five working days set up in our project.
Okay.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be too much.
Anything else? We got the pump going, it's, uh?
Pump's going. Glad you dropped that up. Lightning hit our runway and blew out a chunk of asphalt. And I know we, we, we got, as a matter of fact, I'm leaving, they're going down to CTF, we're gonna try to make some temporary repairs until.
Oh, yeah.
He, he says blew it out. I mean, just a big chunk of it.
But do we have insurance for it?
I guess we do have insurance, don't we? Yeah. So we'll, we'll do an estimate on it and, and see what we can do to fix it. Pump's running.
That's the one, where you go?
Yeah. I mean, it, you know, it's, it's, it happens.
Lightning was bad. Over the weekend, it was bad.
Yeah, it's very, none of us like it. Okay, is anything else?
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, brother. I believe that's all we need, end of it. Uh.
These other two wicked tables.
Yes.
Actually.
They're like, boy, they come up. We don't have tables, they just don't have to leave. Hear your motion, Mr. Jordan?
I'll make a motion. I'll say.
Oh, favorite. Say aye.
I'll hear you back.